Recording in progress.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to the session of the Golden State Council from November 7, 2022. It's good to see Roger here or there after his surgery. Hope we have a full council. So I don't think we need to do the roll call in a normal way. We don't have a public hearing, so we will go to the consideration of the agenda. Do we have a motion to adopt or you have?
I move to approve the agenda.
One second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda for this city council session. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We now consider the consent agenda. That has payroll claims, other things of that nature. We need a motion also to approve the consent agenda or whatever other.
I move to accept the consent agenda.
One second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda for this city council for November 7, 2022. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We don't have presentations tonight, so we'll begin with our department reports and we'll begin with Pat Munnion.
So the Public Works Crew has got most of their equipment, other than one ton truck, ready for snow removal. That one ton truck we're still utilizing because we're still out trying to dig the ditch out of the airport, which is getting better these last weeks. We were actually making 80 foot yesterday and before that we were in solid rock, only making about 10 to 20 foot a day for about two and a half weeks. But hopefully that will continue so we can get that conduit in, hit the rain, flood the whole trench. So you've been out there all day trying to pump that out. It's just a little spot where everything runs to. Other than that, the park bathrooms are locked up for the winter and everything has been wetterized. The crew is going to start working on the gazebo. They will, they're going to make new railing for it, out of metal railing, and work on putting a new roof on it, new stairways going in it, new, I guess, base cover around the bottom of it. The deck is in good shape, so it doesn't need to be replaced. And then probably wait till springtime at this point to do any painting or staining or however they decide they want to finish it out. It's something that desperately needs to be done, so they're going to start working on that. So on Grant Street sidewalk, the contractor has removed that. This is the one that the property owner had pulled out and tried to do a replace. They're working on fixing that. It's formed up. Hopefully it'll be pouring out in the next week. We did get approved for Public Works Trust fund loan for $2.5, well, $2,588,000. And that is one that we need to do because we have a failing water line going out to the golf course and we have to fix that line. It's broke what, four times now in the last four or five months? And it's paper thin. It's not as thin as stone pipe is anymore. Stone pipe that came in from, one second, is it Bloodbute?
Bloodbute.
Bloodbute.
Springs. Springs. They used to feed the city. That line's got to be replaced. It's not going to last much longer. So that's something we'll be working on and then, I think that's about it. Oh, and then if I didn't mention that, I think it was the chief, Doug, and the school have been working together and the school ordered school zones, speed limit signs?
Correct.
Those are in and the Public Works Crew will start working on installing those through the school zone. They're not, they're just constant telling you your speed as you're going through there. Is that correct?
Right. It's a speed signs. It's not the flashing light system at this point in time, but it's brand new signs and then the list, the timeframe of when those are enforced, when that tournament hour speed zone is enforceable. So the school has paid for those and we're going to help get those put up. So, but they'll be around, they'll be all the way around the school zone. That's a start until we can get the flashing units replaced.
Anything else, Pat?
No.
Thank you.
Two questions if I may.
Certainly.
One, has there been progress made on getting the signage needed at the parks for enforcement? Obviously not an issue this time of year, but will be an issue again next year.
I have some drafts made up. I haven't sent them off to the sign company yet.
And then on that water line that's going out to the golf course, does that serve a number of city residents as well or just the golf course?
No, it's pretty much the whole line going all the way out. Where we're having the real problem is about halfway out there. We're not going to replace, it's a 10-inch water line. We're not going to replace it all on 10-inch line. There's only a few services in the last 1,500 feet, so about 1,500 to 2,000 feet of that pipe. What we're going to do is use the old pipe as a pipe chase and then pull it through the failing pipe down to the end where we need it and then put in the services we need.
I just wonder about the cost effectiveness of running a line all the way out there versus just putting, have the golf course put in a well and do their own irrigation of a well? I'm not sure how many feet of that line is just for the golf course versus city residents.
We looked at that, but the issue is it's not just the golf course. I don't even know if the golf course is on it. There's residents out there. And then we would be required to drill a new well for at least, I believe, two residents. And we felt that the price for just pulling it through there and getting down there would be cheaper than actually replacing them on wells. Thank you.
Anybody else with questions or comments? If not, we'll hear from our police chief, Jay Huntzacker.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so I've got a few things tonight. We are up and running on the public safety testing website, PST, for hiring. If you go to that website, you can look up the Goldendale profile, which brings me to other matters here. We do have one entry levels that just turned in this paperwork, so we'll start a background on that person. Also, not, it's 80% sure, but we do have another officer testing, going through the testing process for another agency. That also means we got Maria, up to 22 years of service to the city. This is her last week. She will, she has turned in a resignation, which I accepted, and her final day will be the end of December. So we've got that coming. Now back on to the public safety training test. One thing I want to get direction from the council or consideration is I looked at the website and right now we're offering for lateral only $10,000 sign-on incentive. Okay? Looking through other departments, anywhere from $3,000 up to $25,000 depending departments all over. There are roughly 260 law enforcement agencies in the state of Washington. On PST, there's 216 law enforcement agencies advertising for officers. So we've got a lot of agencies wanting cops. Some, you know, one position open, some nine position open, just dependent the size of the department. Right? So one of the things that we're still trying to do is draw, right? Because it's, let alone the competitiveness of pay, you know, and the large departments with the bigger incentives and stuff like that. You know, to me, the biggest problem is you've got 216, 215, let's count us, wanting cops. So it's, and with the way things are in the state of Washington for the restrictive laws, it's a battle. It's an uphill battle. So Pat and I talked about it and wanted to see what the council thinks about is maybe raising the incentive for laterals and maybe offering an entry level incentive like $3,000 to $5,000, but only after full completion of certification and off FTO. So they wouldn't get that for the first year, till after the first year of everything. But I'm for entry for lateral. I'm asking maybe to see if we can go up to $15,000 to $20,000 to try to draw somebody in as far as a lateral. Because right now I've got one entry level that's going through the hiring process. You know, the background investigation will start soon because I finally got the rest of the paperwork in today, but that's going to take some time. It's the only person I've got on the list. So we're struggling. I'm looking at new schedule with, we lose that other officer that's applying for another agency, we might have to be taking the department into five, eight-hour shifts just to cover and make sure we got double coverage and some room for movement if we have somebody go out sick or anything versus the 10-hour shift. And this is only a temporary move and per the contract, I would have to give you in two weeks notice to move from 10-hour shifts to eight-hour shifts, which are in the contract. So that's what we're looking at there.
Tough spot. Any questions for Jay?
How much does it cost to send a new officer to the academy?
With what we're required to pay, being the smaller department, stuff like that, it's roughly $300 to $400 to send him to the academy. Now that's an entry level. If it's a, if we get a lateral officer, academy doesn't charge us. That's only a two-week course. If it's not an officer that's already certified in the state of Washington. If we get somebody abroad in another state and CJTC accepts their credentials from that, their academy that they went through, it's only a two-week course. And right now, most of those are virtual, so they do it at the police department.
Mayor, the only thing I could say is, I know it's hard to make a decision on this, but if you did get an extra $5,000, do you think that that would really help bring in Christian?
Well, it might be more enticing. I don't know. It's just, it's such a competitive market out there, especially in this state. And there's just so many agencies. I mean, 215 other agencies and, you know, on average, there are two or more officers they're needing, just like us.
Yeah.
You know? And if this entry level passes all the items to be investigations to get a conditional offer, right, then, you know, we'll, we'll still have two positions open if I lose that other officer.
I mean, if a new recruitment did come in, could we say that there is housing available or what other incentives maybe we could, the Goldendale would have, they would say, okay, this would be nice to come to Goldendale.
I don't know about the housing issue because it's so tough.
It is tough.
It is a tough area there. I've put in the description of the community, the benefit packages from the city. So go to the website, take a look at it, and it also talks about the hiring incentive that would be based with an MOU. So I don't know.
Right, right.
I don't know if I got any more ideas to come up to try to draw somebody here.
Right.
You know?
Do you think the best strategy is to try to find someone from outside of the community or try to find someone from within the community that lives here already to, that might be interested in law enforcement to start targeting locals? Or maybe there's people that work for the county sheriff's office that would like to work for the city police?
Well, the one entry level we've got is a homegrown person that's been born and raised here in Goldendale and does not want to leave Goldendale. As far as other officers coming over from agencies and stuff, I mean, our pay is so close, you know, we're down below, just like the, a little bit below the sheriff's office and white salmon, but, you know, we don't have officers wanting to switch around like that. So, but PST reaches out. Anybody that wants to get into law enforcement, they can, they do all the testing for us and stuff and, you know, they advertise for Idaho and Alaska and stuff. So anybody that gets on that website can apply for testing and they handle all that for us and that's nationwide. So, but the company is also home-based in Washington City.
My question is, which is the same question when we addressed the incentive for lateral is what can we do to keep our officers? What can be done? What's their interest? What's their issues? What's, you know, because when we talked about the lateral entry, you know, the $10,000, I asked the same question is, should we be looking at what incentives to give to those officers that are staying here and since then, one more officer is leaving?
Right. I've got a gambit of reasons why these officers are leaving. Plus, it's been a, that's something that I discussed with council members if they want to come talk with me. There's some things I can't disclose due to agreements, but it's been a hard summer and we've lost two people right at the beginning and we were, you know, we were busy. We were extremely busy and I kept a number. Just between the last council and here, and this council, right, we, Goldendale, picked up 190 cases. You know, there's one day between the day shift and swing shift, there's 32 calls for service in one day, one 24-hour period, and that's a lot. That is a lot. So it's just, it's head and mess and it's just busy. So I'm reaching out as far as I can go. I'm trying to come up with any incentives to bring them. Housing would be great, but that is terrible right now. So I'm working on ideas to try to, more incentives to keep people. But come talk to me if you're further about the other issues.
Imagine one of the biggest things to help keep our current officers is taking the workload pressure off of them now due to the staffing situation.
Right, and that's one of the reasons for the 5A's.
But getting those lateral officers in that come in with the experience and the ability to kind of hit the ground running is going to be key. And so I could think that $5,000 additional stipend, or not stipend, the hiring incentive is worth it and what it provides for fellow officers. Current officers taking workload pressure off of them. Would that be for laterals then or for, for laterals that they can come in with the experience and training? I would caveat that with that additional five grand isn't paid out until, you know, FTO is complete and they got three to four years under their belt, but it is something that, you know, is coming if they put the time in grade.
Right. In the description or requirements for laterals, they got to have one year, at least one year of service off supervision or off probation to qualify as a lateral, or, excuse me, two years. So it's in the description about the MOU. And the MOU will be explained once we get that person, how that's going to be paid out. And it's pretty much the same model that we followed, we got from the Dallas Police Department. Part up front and then the other half is after all probationary certifications have been there.
Is that something that council could be moving forward this evening or brought back in two weeks to make that tool available?
How time-sensitive is it? How time-sensitive is it?
These positions are advertised until filled.
Right, you want to get them filled as soon as possible.
Soon as possible.
My only question would be before we move forward as council, that we get direction from staff if we have the money.
I agree. Yes. So we would need to draft an MOU and bring bracket ready for approval. So, I mean, we can have that ready by next council meeting. It'd be something to ask the council.
Does that help you?
Yes, right now, yes. Right now, we do have the $10,000 already placed in to advertise in the PSD website for us.
So just the $5,000 for laterals, all were?
Additional.
Additional to the $10,000. And then what about entry level? Either the same?
We need lateral at this point, but I don't know.
Right. Lateral, Pat and I talked about it, maybe the idea, you know, offering laterals or entry levels like a $3,000 bonus, but they, that does not get payable until they're completely done with all certifications and off probation. So, you know.
Because there's not a lot of them out there paying a bonus for entry level.
No, there are some.
They're just trying to do something to tighten them to.
One of the, Cloud County, they're offering $10,000 for entry level, $25,000 for laterals. And then there was a couple other agencies that had entry level, but that was on the lower end of about $3,000.
I'd be interested in seeing a proposal in my seatmates or whatever.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I agree.
Question, how long is the probation period?
For an entry level officer, it's a year. Laterals, they'll go into a six-month probationary period, depending on their experience too. You know, the one, one latter we did have looking at is that, you know, decided not to, he had 20 years. So it just depends on the experience.
We'll have to consider then at the next council meeting, the MOU and the details. I think we're going to be a council business item and I think that will work well for the chief and for the council.
Well, the other item I need to bring up is the, the old dog kennels. I had Val Shae, one of the rescuers, reach out to me for dog rescues and seen if they said they'd be willing or wanting to get rid of the old chain link panels out there that are in terrible conditions. These are the ones that are outside behind the fence alongside the back of the building and stuff and they're, they're no cost worthy to the city. And they asked if they can have those so when they do dog rescues, they can have kennels for them. And I fully support that. But I told them I would have to check with city council on that, but they, they're pretty worn out and some of them are just not in good shape at all.
Are we still using that facility at all? I didn't think so.
No.
Where is the old animal rescue?
There are volunteers, Val Shae, actually, I think she lives out on Turkey Ranch Road, but they also work with other personnel that will foster dogs and stop being that there is not a county kennel to take the dogs that are, you know, lost or, you know, or abandoned at this point in time. So they're the ones that brought the attention to me. Val Shae was one of them that brought the attention to me when I first looked at the position, how bad it was out there, at the kennel that was being run by the dog agency. That's why we had it shut down.
Just a question on, well, two questions. Is the rescue group a licensed rescue group? And if so and if not, what is the likelihood in the city to give those away and basically promote a rescue that's not licensed? I don't know if they are. Just.
Not that I know of. So they were just asking about the panels if we were going to get rid of them. They would like to have them.
If there is no value to them, you can give them away. You'd have to, and whether there's really any value to them, I would say probably not. I mean, we'd have to try, you could try and sell them, but.
Well, I'm just more concerned is, is the rescue a licensed group and by giving them to a private citizen or to a rescue group, is the city promoting a rescue group that may have dogs in poor conditions?
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, no. Val would have been here tonight, but she had to work.
I just don't know enough about the group to, to know, you know.
I think they get a good report. They're doing a real good job.
Very difficult job.
Very difficult job, very needed.
Yes.
Yeah, they need it.
One other question, Mayor. I just, the reward sign, we don't have the reward sign working and was there an accident there to cause that?
Yes, there was an accident that took out a power pole out there.
Oh, okay. Well, I think the Goldendale Chamber is looking into that because they're going to have to bring in the technician to reprogram it or something.
That is a documented police report that what caused that to go out.
Yeah, okay.
Right, yeah. It was right there at the, it'd be the southeast corner of the second hand store just before Genevieve's Coffee Shop.
Okay, okay.
Okay, it was right there at the alley.
Okay, I just wondered, yeah.
It was a DUI. He went to jail.
I don't know what the new one is.
That's all I have here.
What's the name of the rescue place? Dog rescue?
I don't know if they have a name, but it's just they do volunteer work to help house animals that are lost or found, being that there's no kennel in the town at this time. But I will get that information from Val if there's any license and if there's a name for them. Okay, but I know there's a group of women in this area that do this on their own.
Thank you, Chief. Anything?
Nope, I'm done. I bet they're here's enough.
Okay. We'll call Steven Randall, Special Fire Chief, if they go over to the fire department.
Fire Department, I just have a couple small things I'm going to report on. One, just to give you guys an update, we're, calls to date, we're at 151 calls to date. And then the other thing are literally just a couple public announcements. We just turned our clocks back on Sunday, or on Saturday night, just a reminder, check your smoke detectors. It's a good time to change your batteries and check your smoke detectors when you change your clocks. And then for anybody that did not know, burn ban has been lifted. That's really all I got.
Thank you.
If you have any other questions.
Any comments or questions? Now go on to council business and Pat Munnion will introduce the first item.
Earlier this year, we talked a couple times about contracting with the CPA agency to help us simplify the budget. That what's being presented tonight is an agreement with TJ or TDJ CPA Incorporated Service. They're willing to assist the city with simplifying the budget to correlate the VARs number system to make it more, not so busy of a budget and to make it more easy for everybody to track from the revenue side to the expenditure side of the budget. Also, so there's a 2001 Schedule V6 balance sheet that was submitted last year. They did not like that balance sheet, so they're going to help us work on that balance sheet to provide, what that balance sheet does is provide a representation of the city's financial position at any point in time. This is something that I believe last year was the first year of the state auditor. Is that correct?
Yeah, so this, I think it's the state auditor.
State auditor requirement.
But it's a really confusing spreadsheet and so the way that it was previously done, they didn't like the way it looked. It was very confusing if the numbers aren't exactly right. So this CPA company has figured out the tricks of how to put all of our numbers in and get it to balance the way it's supposed to look.
It's, no, it's complicated for me.
Yeah. And so I'm not sure why they use it.
And this way at least we'll, if we, we'll try to do it on our own next year. If we feel like we can figure out what they're doing, they're going to show us how to do it.
The lady that I spoke with, she said she does it for several cities because it's, it's that complicated. Yeah, so, and I don't know if the state auditors helps people do it, but she does it for quite a few cities in Washington, so. Yeah, so, and I don't know if the state auditors helps people do it, but she does it for quite a few cities in, in Washington, so.
And the auditor is, they're gonna check our calculations related to the modifications of the W three forms, which the W three form is used to, uh, pull up all parts of the W two forms. So just to make sure what was done this last year is accurate and moving forward and it gives us a clean starting place. And it's a contract not to exceed seven thousand dollars or agreement.
Any comments or questions for Pat?
I assume this is a one-time contract agreement?
This is a one-time agreement for those topics.
If we would desire any follow-up, we would just have to revisit?
Yeah, it would come back. You know, we would, you know, maybe at some point, uh, wanna come back with a different type of agreement where we could use them as an on-call service to help us in a situation where we're, we're struggling with financially, to look at it and help us make those corrections or modifications. But that would be more like an on-call service and it would still have a do not exceed the amount annually attached to it. But these are things we need to get done, so.
This is the company that you guys mentioned at the budget meeting?
Yes.
To help with all the VARs and.
Yes.
Yeah.
They do budgeting for several cities, actually. Some cities just don't do their own budgeting. They just hand their stuff to them and they figure out their budget and they do their budget and give it back to them. So they, they know the VARs number system.
Any other questions or comments?
We're gonna move on that, Steve, or?
I move to authorize clerk craitor to enter into the service agreement with TDJ CPA Incorporated.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
If there aren't further questions or comments, it's moved and seconded to authorize the clerk craitor to enter into the service agreement with TDJ CPA Incorporated. Any further questions or comments? If not, we'll call for a vote on in favor.
Aye, aye, aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Thank you. I think that would be very helpful for us to understand the, the budget more clearly. That's, that's the whole goal there.
There's always room for improvement.
Yes, intended. The next one is the administrative request for the consideration of council, and I'll present that. At present, the city provides the city administrator slash public works director with medical insurance at a total cost to the city of two thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars monthly. And in brackets, one thousand five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents for medical insurance and an additional six hundred and eight dollars and thirty-three cents goes into the health savings account to offset out-of-pocket expenses, medical costs. The administrator, public works director will be changing his medical insurance, this is Pat, will be changing his medical insurance to another provider at his expense in January twenty twenty-three. For city council consideration, the city administrator works, public works director is requesting from the council permission to add the six hundred and eight dollars and thirty-three cents that is currently paid into the HSA to the monthly salary, to his monthly salary. If approved, this change will save the city eighteen thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-two cents annually. The administrator slash public works director would still be covered by the city's dental and vision plans. The savings for the city is eighteen thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-two cents and it's a, um, staff recommendation. You have questions or comments? Pat will have to answer those, 'cause. Anything?
Sounds like a good deal.
It's a really good. Clears up a awkward spot with another insurance company not having, uh, ready as all the coverage is required.
No, it's a win-win.
It is, I feel.
Big pack, well done, Pat.
I do have a question.
Sure.
So would there be documentation to show that the city will not need to provide health insurance in the future? That.
Yeah, I'm gonna come back with a, um, a contract event, 'cause we'd have to add this amount to my contract. So the contract would make it very clear that if I ever opted back into the city's medical, I would have to give the six hundred and eight, eight dollars and thirty-three cents back.
Okay. I'm just wondering, you're paying out-of-pocket, so if that increases on a yearly basis, that's completely on you and then the city has no.
No, this would become part of my salary. So, and I would be paying taxes on it.
Paycheck?
Yeah, right now, this is tax-free money that you're total amount. When it goes into my paycheck, it would become part of my salary and I would be paying taxes on it. So I'd probably only see about four hundred dollars of that amount. But that's just gonna help me offset costs only under the previous for the other insurance. The only reason I'm changing to the other insurance, it's just a better fit for my family's medical needs. I just, I, you know, as a way to save the city some money and, and I, I get, you know, insurance that suits my family's needs a little bit better.
So, sorry, one more question. So the motion is to accept that or will we wait until the new contract comes in and the motion is to move forward on the contract?
I'll just make modifications to the contract and bring back for next time.
So do we table the motion until we see the contract?
It's the council's choice.
I would like to make the motion. I move to increase the city administrator slash public works director's monthly salary by six hundred and eight dollars and thirty-three cents and stop paying his medical coverage starting January first, two thousand twenty-three. Employer will continue to prove, provide vision and dental coverage to the employee.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to increase the city administrator slash public works director's monthly salary by six hundred and eight dollars and thirty-three cents and stop paying his medical coverage starting January one, twenty twenty-three. Employer will continue to provide vision and dental coverage to the employee. If no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. The next item is a result of discussions with the council on the, uh, Goldendale Municipal Code. And, uh, Pat will present this document.
So based on previous discussions, um, sorry, I should have printed this a little bit bigger. From city council about, uh, how you guys, you know, one of them was meeting time. Uh, other issues was on the layout of the current ordinance. And so what I did is tried to take those comments and incorporate those into a draft here, um, that you can go through. You can see all the red lines. Like the first one is, you know, uh, meetings on the page. You guys, there was a comment made a couple council members ago about changing the time from seven PM to an earlier time. I put six PM there. It, that's just based on discussion. Whatever you guys decide, just let us know. If you wanna do that. And then the, the need of it was back on, um, two oh four, one ten, order of business. Where, um, I think everybody agreed that public hearings should be moved to the, uh, or public comments should be moved up prior to discussion in city council business so that they have an opportunity to talk on the, um, the agenda business items only in that public comment. And then at the end, we did put another, um, news section in there where it's called open public comment. And then anybody would have their three minutes to discuss any topic they wanted. I think that, um, kinda fits what you guys were trying to get at. Uh, and then under E, I just put some clarifying language in there, um, about agenda packets, about when we need the information and what they need to. All agenda package shall, and all necessary information for council review to determine what is being requested and what outcome is being sought at the forthcoming meeting. What that language has to do is people doing presentations request last minute if somebody wants to do a presentation. Well, we haven't had any time and staff. They, they haven't provided us anything. It's just a request. So we don't know what they're presenting, what the outcome is. And so what we're doing by adding this language is they have to provide us information and time for staff to repair, you know, our, our billing sheet for you guys so that you have information of this is what they're presenting, this is what they're requesting, so that you guys have time to review that and any counter information that we may find add in there and a recommendation. If they don't provide anything, we can't give you any direction on, on how to proceed in the agenda bills. Does anybody have any comments on anything? No public comment. As I did under section two point zero four, one four zero addressing meetings, identifying closed public comment periods shall adhere to business on agenda. Open public comment periods shall be open to any, uh, appropriate comments as determined by the city council. City council reserves the right to stop any public comments that they determine to be inappropriate.
We need a motion to, uh, accept these changes?
Well, this'll, you can make a motion to accept the changes, but it still has to come back in ordinance form.
But if you have comments or questions on any of those changes or anything else that you think should be changed? 'Cause this is something the council generated.
Yeah.
Wanting this updated, so it's.
Yeah, this'll have to come back. We'll go to a public hearing of the, of the next meeting if that's what you guys want.
And that's the only way it could be changed.
So do you wanna wait till we do a public hearing?
I have a question.
Sure.
'Cause I'm not really for limiting the public's right to speak.
We expanded it.
We did, but, so my question is, on any given agenda item, does this restrict it from the council adding a public comment to a specific agenda item under the agenda item?
I'm not sure what you're asking, Phil.
So if there was an agenda item to be added for discussion or whatever, can council still put on there or request for public comment under that agenda item?
Yeah, that's still under ordinance.
Okay. So you can do it in the, in the beginning, at the end, and for some items during the item?
Yeah, if you add it to the agenda, then if somebody wanted to make a public comment on it, then they would do that at the beginning.
Okay, 'cause I know we've discussed some heated topics in the past and I think some of those might be important to.
I think it's, sure, I think it's the two council members have to agree to put it on the agenda or something. I have to go back here and read that. It, it's in there someplace, but, yeah, so if you put it on the agenda at the beginning of the meeting when you're doing your consent agenda and you add it to that, and then the public comment follows that, then, 'cause that would be an agenda topic of business, then people could address that in the, the first public comment section. If it wasn't on the agenda, then they would have to wait till the end to calm down.
Okay, but they cannot comment during that section?
That section is only to discuss city business. They have the bottom section, and if they bring something back at the bottom section and you guys wanna put on the next agenda, we could do that.
No, I'm asking for like, for example, on our current agenda, let's say council business, number one, TDP CPA Incorporated. Can public comment be added at the point that we discuss the TJ CPA Incorporated?
So you wanna public comment below each item as well?
Not all, all the time?
I think what, what Phil's talking about, there's been some topics in the past where things have come up and then, well.
If it's on the agenda and the council at any time on any topic, if it's on the agenda and want to involve public comment during that period, they can. That's your guys' choice. You just need to direct that to the mayor, that, that's which he, you know, you need to ask the mayor to take public comment and he could do that.
Yeah, 'cause it, it might be easier to, you know, put that under that topic than it is to have everybody, all fifty guests, come in and speak at the beginning and everybody else that's in the agenda have to wait, you know?
Well, the whole point of allowing people prior to city council conducting business is so nothing goes through the agenda. So you don't go to your agenda items without giving the opportunity to the public to address a concern they may have about a particular topic on the agenda. That, that's kind of the purpose. That's how it's normally done. But the choice is yours. However you guys wanna set it up, you guys just gotta give us direction and we'll set it up that way.
My choice would be to keep that open, not to have it under all of them, but to just keep it open and say like, okay, everybody that's here to speak under this item, that's gonna happen in like half hour or an hour later. Hold your comments until that section and then speak to that specific one. I don't know what the rest of the council wants.
Well, I like it how you wrote it up there. I mean, you have a certain time before everything. Say, hey, anybody have anything to talk about that's on the agenda? And then Larry could come up and say whatever he wanted. It, it looks pretty good to me just how it's written. I think it's good, but I do understand what Phil's saying. There's been times that we've had major issues of like the marijuana thing, the Ashley thing, where it would be easier to say, okay, public comment for everything on here, but if you're gonna talk about this, we're gonna wait until that topic. But again, we could direct the mayor to do that.
In, in the past, we had a particular sin, essentially thing. Normally I move the public comment up ahead of that because there's, there's so many people wanting to say something.
It gets mixed.
Yeah.
Right? So you're gonna have a hot topic mixed with, you know, my sidewalk is broken.
Sure.
You know, different things like that.
And on the public comments at the end of the, later in the meeting, they're very, very well being, points said that would be in the next agenda because they're very meaningful concerns. So, everybody satisfied with questions?
I am.
I am, as presented.
Good, good. Thank you. We'll have that in the form of the next council meeting. And the next item is an ordinance. This is ordinance number one five, one nine, and Pat Munyon will present that as well.
So, um, at the last city council meeting, we, uh, held a public hearing, uh, ordinance fifteen nineteen. There was, uh, some minor, so some unsubstantiated changes to this where just on a clarity issue that was brought to my attention under, uh, I think page two. You can see the red down there, just says, this section shall not be misconstrued as a requirement for pre-existing non-conforming use. "This section shall not be misconstrued as a requirement for pre-existing non-conforming use of RV and trailer parks." For pre-existing non-conforming uses refers to GMA Chapter seventeen fifty-six. And that's in E of two, three sections. It doesn't change anything that was really the intent of the ordinance, it's just clarifying, to go to a different section for non-conforming uses. It's already in the ordinance.
I have a question. How come it's redundant, like it is, how come it's...
Because it's dealing with different zonings.
Each zoning has to state each rule, for each zoning.
If you look up here, in the list, all the zonings.
Steve, when I look at it, it's not changing the rules, and it particularly is providing things that are already existing. You don't have to go back and start over with changes to there, what was already in the, in the ordinance.
Yeah, those changes change nothing, it's just clarifying for a certain section, go here.
Very specific.
And the reason why that language was there, because you do have grandfathered in RV parks that are in R1 and R2 zones. So we didn't want it being misconstrued that they weren't grandfathered in.
Make it fair.
Even though with that language there, it went change it, it's still grandfathered in. Everybody know what I mean by grandfathered in, right?
It's all the grandfathers do.
And this ordinance, it calls for adoption or approval of the ordinance, fifteen nineteen, so if we have a motion?
I'm motion for ordinance seventeen ninety.
I'll second that.
Council has been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number one five, one nine, as discussed during this council session. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We'll move on now to report officers, and we'll begin reports by our council members. I'll move again with Andy Hall.
If you haven't already, get up there and vote. I think it's important, right, that we have, that not a lot of people do. So I think it's important, everyone should get up there and vote.
Go back to him.
I have nothing.
My...
Yes, Mary, I have two comments I'd like to make. I'd like to make about the conference that you and I attended up in Leavenworth. This is on the small airports conference, and we talked to our council that we've hired, and we had an opportunity to learn how it maybe gets the potential funding. One of the guest speaker was Senator Honeyberg, it was good to see him. So anyway, I, it was a good conference, I don't know, you may wanna comment more, Mayor, on it. The other one I wanna bring up is, two weeks ago, I invited the director of Department of Commerce, Lisa Brown, to come down to Goldendale, and she come down, and along with the assistant director. And Department of Commerce, that's where the capital projects funding has come from, and other grants. And so anyway, we had a good roundtable discussion. The chamber was there, library was there, of course, the mayor, Cannon, conducted the meeting, and we, it was a very good conference. Ryan was there, and talked about the pump storage, and the hospital was there, and so, it was well-attended. And afterwards, we had the meeting over there at the county, New County Service Building, and after the meeting, then the county economic director took the director, Lisa Brown, upstairs to the, to see and meet with the county commissioners. And they had a chit-chat, and they talked, and so. And then afterwards, then the director of the chamber took Lisa Brown out to the main street, showed the murals we have, and also potential thoughts that we have for revitalization of downtown Goldendale. Anyway, like I said again, it was a good meeting, and just wanted to pass that word on, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
And the Department of Commerce is, I think, the absolutely largest by a tenthfold of any department in Washington State government. And Lisa is a very, very important civic leader in the state, and was a real pleasure to work with her. She's very positive, I think it was a good experience for everybody to have those exchanges of views. I didn't mean to interrupt, but I did anyway. Steve, next. Steve?
Well, it's already been touched on, and that is, one of the things, is that amending time we have for meetings. And I just was, I was just gonna do a reminder on that for the rest of the council, as far as doing that. And it looks like if we are in consensus with draft that's already been brought up, it will address that. I'm sure the council has thought about it, since I brought it up. And I don't, again, we can wait until the draft is finalized, written up the way it is, or we can do it separately through a motion at a council meeting, put it on the agenda.
Sure. For that specific item of changing the time.
You were going to order it for the council change.
Yeah, we'll have, it'll have to go through a public hearing.
To change an ordinance, it has to go through a public hearing first, and then all of it'll be changed.
All right, and again, the draft and the...
It has to go through a public hearing first.
Do it, address it.
Yeah, so at the next meeting, we'll have a public hearing, because you have to have a public hearing to change an ordinance.
Right.
And the agenda, how it shows, is in actual ordinance.
Right.
Okay. So at this point, we're on track to move to six o'clock?
Sounds like it.
Does that sound, is that good to me?
I may ask, Mayor O'Jade, is that what, are you in off-duty time, or?
Oh, yes, that's no work for me, too.
Okay.
Talk to the boss.
Andy, how about you?
I'll be the assistant.
And then, one other thing, we used to have this, and I would like to see it brought back, and that is a regular or periodic update on code enforcement. I mean, it doesn't have to be every council meeting, it could be once a month, but periodic update on what's happening in the realm of code enforcement. Because I know he's busy.
He's very busy.
He's got his hands full, and I want to commend him, he's doing a terrific job. And at the same time, I'd like to compliment Pat for reaching out to the council members to keep us informed and updated on a regular basis.
Very big help.
It's, it is, it's a big help, and I compliment Pat on doing that.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, and I hope all the other council members do also. And that would be it.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to start bringing up, let's start looking at Event Committee, because we usually, we meet in December to start planning community days and everything. It's November now, so I wanna start bringing it up now, so we can get that in the works, getting the Event Committee organized to distribute those funds, and get the applications brought to us for who wants those funds to put on events next year, right? We usually meet in December last year to do that, right?
December, yeah.
That's all I have, thanks, Mayor.
Good, it's good to get it started quickly. Lauren?
I guess just thanks to Pat and Sandy for the full council workshop on the budget, and just hopefully, we can keep having those conversations as we finalize the budget, and maybe make some future revisions as we have a consult on that, so, I think that was really helpful.
Casey definitely helps us.
Pardon?
Said it definitely helps Sandy and I, so, then we know where you guys are at.
And that helps us.
Well, I have just a couple of things. One of them, of course, has already been talked about, the eight-hundred-pound elephant in the room is the midterm elections tomorrow. And it doesn't matter what political party you are, you need to vote. If you haven't, please make every effort to do that. A voice not expressed can be a real real worry for you later on, that you didn't speak up, and they had something you really wanted to have changed. The other item, a little bit about the airport that Mylan brought up. We're working right now on the fuel system, and they're very close to getting everything in place. Making good progress, other than the rock in this area, that's really been a challenge. But they're doing great on that, the cart system and the fuel and all that will be. That, that makes a very, very good airport just like that, because the length of our runway fits any propeller-driven plane at all, even some of the bigger ones. It doesn't fit jets, and that's how long our range go. But the fuel we have is half-gas and night tank. That's the fuel that ninety-something percent of all the planes in the country use. Helicopters use diesel sort of jets. That's something that we're working on, but that'll be in the future. But we have a very, when we get this fueled in, we'll hit one of the major goals of getting the airport up and running, and hopefully being able to pave its way through the system. There seems to be a lot of indicators that we'll have more fuel business than we realize, by where Goldendale is and the different patterns of air traffic around this part of the country. And the last one is, remember, it's great that we're gonna get to vote, but on Friday, the eleventh, it's Veterans Day, and they're the reason we do get to vote. And I think those need to be looked very closely. As a vet, I really think we gotta do it that way.
So thank a veteran. I said, thank a veteran.
Yes, hug a veteran, well, maybe just thank him. We'll go now to public comment, is there anyone in the council chamber or on the Zoom screen listening in that would like to make public comment? I don't see a request here in the council room. Nothing, it seems, on the Zoom, or the telephone. With that, then we need to have a motion to adjourn.
So move, second?
Moved and seconded to adjourn city council, November seventh, two thousand twenty-two. All in favor?
Aye.
The next city council meeting will be November twenty-first. I think the week, thanks, Gary.